All right. Can you? All right. Getting everybody, we officially open the meeting for the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals. It is 7:07. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So like I said, we're waiting on our Vice Chair Greg, who is on his way, and we do have two members of our zoning board on Zoom. I see Dave. Do we have Sue on Zoom?
No, not Sue, just David.
Just Dave, okay.
Just Dave, and that must be in the butter.
Okay. And then we have, so we will confirm our next meeting date, which would be Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. Should the case from tonight be continued? Will that date work for you guys if you need to come back? It'll be Tuesday, March 25th. Okay. All right, so John, before I read the posting as it was in the Gazette, do you mind just giving us three voting members, please?
I would, Greg is not here, and we have online, so I would do you, myself, and Alice.
Okay, so I'm going to read the posting as it was in the Gazette. Notice is hereby given, the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals will conduct a public hearing at Old Town Home 1111 Somerset Ave., Dayton, Mass. on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. On the variance application of Mako Enterprises LLC and Elevator Properties LLC for property located at 233R Somerset Street, being shown as Assessor's Map 4 Lot 201 pursuant to Section 2620 Table of Dimension requirements, Appendix B of the Town of Dayton zoning bylaw in order to improve the current structure into a single-family dwelling with insufficient frontage. Any persons wishing to be heard, any persons interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should attend this hearing. Copies of the application are available in the Zoning Board Office of Appeals, the Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals website, or upon request can be viewed by email or by calling (508) 669-6431, extension 114, or emailing K Easterday. So the applicant, if he or she is ready, if you can come on and just present your case, we will...
Sorry, can we have a motion to open the public hearing with a roll call?
Oh, roll call, yeah, okay. So a motion to open the public hearing for the case?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, Zachary Karen.
Aye, Jonathan Gale.
Aye, Greg Logan.
Aye, Elise Vincent.
Dave, you can unmute yourself.
Aye, David Schello.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
All right, whenever you are ready, and we will, of course, go to any abutters of public input after the case is presented, so you may go ahead and present your case. Yes, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having me. So as you said, I'm here on behalf of Mako Properties and Elevator Properties for their application for variances. There was a small discrepancy in the initial memo that was submitted. I had been working with Curry, so there was an updated one after speaking with town council and his edit, so that one has been submitted.
Yes, we do have it, we'll add that to the minutes, and this was...
So the addition, along with the frontage, was the structures currently, according to town council, wasn't designated as a residential dwelling per the bylaw, so that would be the other request with this application.
Okay.
So this is the property located 223R Somerset Street in Dayton. I'm sorry, 233 Somerset Street in Dayton. Again, seeking a variance for the frontage and residential dwelling designation. I don't know if you're aware of the property, it's a very odd-shaped property. Two very small entrances on Prospect and I believe Summer, and then it widens up sort of this oval shape. Very strange. I sit at my board in my town, and I've never seen a lot set up like that before. Very, very unique. So for the variances, special circumstances relating to the, either the soil, the shape, the topography, as the board's aware of, in this case, obviously, we would be presenting it with shape, the shape, it says elongated oval shape. The frontage of the 175 required in the residential district is obviously not met. This, if you look at the plans, it's well short. It's, I believe it's 24 feet or so on Bedford and about 30 on Prospect. It might be a little under those, but just about that amount. So the applicant, with this frontage, there's no way for him to really purchase a budding land or make it any better. It's all land that's in use that has homes on them. The literal interpretation of this, you know, bylaw would render the really unbuildable lot. Again, the financial burden to try to purchase land to create the frontage that is needed, it's just, it's not feasible. Further, the relief granted wouldn't be a substantial detriment of the public good. The proposed use is consistent as a residential dwelling with that district. It's a residential district surrounded by, you know, homes all in that area. Many of the neighboring lots, obviously they're probably pre-existing, don't have the required frontage either and the lot size. So the variances would enable, you know, this, this structure of the property to be, the main structure to be, which what I would call a house, but to be renovated. There's really, the house is in rough shape. The two, there's two outbuildings, which I'd call garages, one bigger than the other. Again, really dilapidated. The house structure itself inside isn't as bad as you might think, but outside, it's, it's pretty bad. There's a lot of, I'm sure some of the neighbors know, there's people have been dumping trash there. The clients had to clean some of that up a few times. There's, obviously with that, there's overgrowth, there's critters or whatnot kind of running around the place. So the proposal would be they would, to have these variances, simply renovate what's there, not looking to add on, stay within those footprints, clean out the property, and hopefully get a nice family living in there.
Before I open up to the questions of the board, I will read in two letters from other town boards that have submitted comments, and I'll speak to the other contractor. But first, as a point of information, can you quickly address the history of this case in the sense that, can you speak on the petition that was brought before, not this board, but the town zoning board at the time in 2003 regarding this case, this property?
Yeah, I've, you know, reviewed the title and read that, that decision, and I think what that one came down to was sort of a merger argument. So the prior owner of that lot and a lot that was on the corner of Prospect and Summer, which I believe, if you look on the, one of the plans, I might just be able to, I might be able to see it a little better. I don't know if you have the...
Is it the one that's 698 slash 700 that's on Prospect and Bedford, or Prospect and Summer, that's 763?
Yeah, I want, I'm just twisting around here. It's the one on Prospect, so right at the corner, the Prospect entrance into the property.
Thank you.
There you go. Yeah, the assessor map has it different, but, yeah, so that, that was the property, as I understand, it was owned by a Mr. Algier, and he owned the subject property as well. So, again, I wasn't a part of that, but from what I could read from the decision, they were saying, well, basically, he created a sort of a, sort of created his own hardship because there is some law that says if you own both parcels, that abut in common ownership, that they can, it's a theory called merger. So for zoning purposes, it merges. There is case law that discusses merger when it comes to, if there's a way in between the merge, the merged lots, that they can't merge. So if there was a private way, you know, in this case, there's, if you look on the plans, it's, there's an old, a recorded plan, and also the assessor plans, they show, you know, what looks like a roadway coming through there, the way. You know, I don't know how it was designated way back then, but certainly that would have been an argument I would have made that...
So it's showing that they, they enter from Bedford Street and Prospect Street, but the address is Summer Street?
Yep.
Yes.
And it was never a house?
No, it was never supposed to be square.
So he keeps calling it a house, but it was...
It was not.
Okay.
Somebody just built it along from that back in the day. It was a garage for a landscaper.
So I will read into the record just the comments from fire, sewer, and then I will turn it over to Jim, who should speak on this case. So this is dated, this is from the fire chief, dated February 10th. Dayton Zoning Board of Appeals, the fire department's concerns in regards to the above address is solely fire department access to the structure. To remedy our concerns, we require the following. This is in bullets, I'll give them the numbers. One, a 20-foot-wide access road slash driveway can be 12 feet of road material with four cleared, uh, four feet cleared of vegetation of each shoulder of the road. Two, road slash driveway must have an unobstructed vertical clearance of no less than 13 feet 6 inches. Three, road driveway must be capable of supporting the imposed loads of fire apparatus and shall be all weather surface that is maintained as provided. Four, road driveway must extend to within 50 feet of at least one exterior door. Five, road driveway can have no inside turning radiuses less than 25 feet. Six, if the road driveway is a dead end and is a, and is great in length, then a turnaround for fire apparatus must be provided. Seven, the gradient of the road driveway shall not exceed 10% unless approved in writing by the fire chief. And this is dated February 20th. This is from the sewer commission. Members, the property located at 233R Somerset Street, North Dayton, the sewer commissioners and sewer superintendent submit the following facts. Currently, there is no sewer connection available for that lot. There is a public sanitary sewer in that area, however, any work would have to be approved by this Board of Sewer Commissioners. A line extension and/or connection will be the property owner's responsibility and solely at their expense. Robert Woods, Chairman, Thomas Ferry Clerk. So we'll have both in the record, and then Jim, if you want to come on up and speak whatever information you have related to this case. And then at that point, I'll turn it over to the questions of the board, and then I will go to public.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dayton. Good to see everyone. So I'll give a little bit of background. I've been here 15 years. I know the property. It's a property that's been open to the weather on numerous occasions. I've had to secure it. I've inspected the interior, albeit years ago. It was a property that was trying to be converted into a home, as we all know, that was done without proper permitting, and in the early 2000s, as you alluded to, a variance was sought and denied. The property has remained secured, at least to my knowledge. There have been liens placed on the property for said securing, and those liens have all been satisfied by prior owners. So what's before you tonight is a plan that differs a little bit from what we have in town records. However, it's a recorded plan done by a professional land surveyor, so professionally, I'm not at a position to refute that plan. The plan clearly shows that there is frontage on two roads, and it has an area in excess of 35,000 square feet. However, being in this town for as long as I have, there's been a lot of discussion from the abutters, which is why I'm sure they're all here, that they have rights to legal access to their properties through this property, albeit a right of way or an easement. I personally can say to the board, I've never read any of those rights, legal rights, be it a deed, and there are no easements shown on this plan. So I would encourage the board to make sure that they hear the words of the, of the abutters, and if there are legal access rights to their properties through this property, then this plan needs to be corrected and show the appropriate easements. Thank you.
All right. Start with John. Do you have any questions?
I have a few to start, and I'm sorry, John, when you spoke, your name is?
Fredrick Castle.
So I'm going to ask some questions and preface it by saying I'm visually impaired, so if I ask a question that is something on the site plan or something, please, no, I can't visually review the plan very easily. So just be aware. So you said there's currently three buildings on the, on the site, is that correct?
Yes.
And they're the main, you could describe them, and what's the intent with the other two?
That currently, what I would classify as garages, and I believe the intent was to keep them as garages.
As a point of information, garage, as in, why do you define them as garages?
That's what I was, yes, as well.
In my, from what I know, garage has a car in it. So was your definition different than what we all think it was a garage?
It's been a while. I believe one had garage doors on it. The other one just, I mean, I call it garage some sort of outbuilding accessory to the, what I would consider what was called the home. I understand it wasn't properly permitted that way, but, but to me, if you, to me, they just looked like garages.
So for the, the residence itself, you would be, in the, you would be going from how many feet to how many feet? I'll get to the frontage in a minute, but...
I'm sorry, how many?
You said you, they want to renovate their residence, what you referred to as the residence?
Yes.
But you also said it was in pretty lousy shape. Does renovating mean tear it down?
No, the intent was to keep the, I guess, the bones of the structure and renovate.
But are you keeping the same footprint, or are you expanding the footprint of it?
Footprint was going to remain the same.
So if you have the two other buildings, why, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get is, why do those need to, are those going to stay the same? Are those going to be redone? Are you asking for anything for those? If this is going to be a piece of property that eventually hopes to be renovated and resold, what's going to happen with those other two pieces? Or what I'm trying to get at is, why do you need this frontage, when potentially, if it's that bad, it could be torn down and redone, including where those other buildings might be, potentially not affecting so much of frontage?
I just, the, the intent was to just keep all the structures as is and just, and just renovate them. My clients didn't get into knocking them down. They thought it was easier and, you know, less, I guess, offensive if it was just the same structure, the same footprints. That said, I don't know if they'd be adverse to taking one of the garage, what I'm calling the garage down, but as of now, they were just looking to renovate what's there.
If your client's here, I'd like to hear from your client if they're averse to that or not, potentially changing the footprint.
My client, they are not here.
So we don't know, so we won't know the answer tonight?
No, they wanted to maintain the current footprint, because it's within all the setbacks. There's no other dimensional setback needed where the position of the structures is now, so they didn't want to, you know, be moving it around and causing any other issues with setbacks.
Have any of the residents who are here, I know the building commissioner mentioned, you know, right of way as well. Have any of the abutters approached you or the current owners with any documents to show that there was anything whenever they purchased their property, had their property, that there's any paperwork given them?
No one's...
Sure, I have my deed right here that, because probably all the deeds on that row are probably saying the same thing, which we have access for life.
Okay, I'm going to just hold off until...
We get the public input, yeah.
Until we get to that, okay? Okay. No, I was asking him, but you, you'd get a chance to address that then. Okay.
I have not been given anything from the abutters.
So if, if an abutter shows you something like that, is that potentially going to, that's something to me you would want to go back and discuss with your clients?
Well, I think that there's easement rights to pass and repass over what I'm going to call the driveway on the plan. They very, very way may have that right. That doesn't mean they can park on the, on that, but they can use it for...
But if they need to pass through it?
Sure.
Could that potentially affect where you're going to locate a driveway, what you're going to do with the driveway, what you're going to do for, what the fire department is asking as well, for example?
I don't think so, because it's just, if it's just an access easement, they have the right to access, I would assume, the rear of their properties through that way. You know, there's lots of easements throughout towns and different roads, and that doesn't mean someone can block the easement, but they can, they can pass over it to get to their property. I don't, I can't think off the top of my head if that would have an impact on the, on the fire department and the fire chief's analysis. I could certainly look at that with the surveyor, maybe discuss with the fire department if that's something you'd, you know, like us to do.
I would like to hear an answer to that, yes, definitely. I'm sure I'll have more questions, Zach, but I'm going to defer for now.
Okay, Greg?
So I'm just trying to bring myself up to speed on this. So the house of 233, when was that built? The one on, that's actually on Somerset?
Not Somerset Street?
The, what I've been referring to is the, the main structure there?
The main structure.
Yeah, I don't know when it was constructed. I know the last variance application was back in 2000.
23 was the, Greg, I don't know if you, I certainly...
I wasn't on that last one.
No, it was 20, 2003. I mean, the entire development is pretty old.
We'll call it the structure that's been renovated without permitting in the back. That particular structure was put up prior to that house being set up there in the 1950s, so that house is much older, I take it correct?
Well, there's two, according...
This house, this house and two structures.
That's the house?
Yeah, the structure in the back.
And then that structure there.
Yes, and there's the two garages, as he's calling it.
Right, so...
Yeah, one, two, three.
Existing structure, that's the house, garage. No, right, but that's...
Yeah, I'm just referring it to that way, just because it, that's what it appears as.
Yeah, so what are they here in front of, insufficient frontage for adequate acreage? Is that what they're here for?
Yes.
Yep.
Do you have the red, the recorded deed for this piece of property?
Yeah, it was submitted with the application, but I do have a...
So the recorded deed shows easements on this property as well, that you guys have?
No, there's no reference to easements in the deed.
And how long has your client owned this piece of property?
It's been a few years, but he per, they purchased and the deeds dated November 21, 2023, went to record on the 27th.
Since that date is when the renovations started in the structure in the back?
No, they haven't done any renovations to it.
The current owners have not.
The current owners have not. The prior owner had started renovations to a building, accessory building in the back to make a house out of it.
Jim is confirming that, yep.
Yes, that was in the early 2000s, Greg.
Okay.
No work has gone on there.
Okay.
Yeah, my people, once they learned of the issue, saw a council and came to the town to seek the approval. They, they haven't done any sort of renovations in there.
And if this, if this was going to be considered, this was going to be 233R, you're going to try to use this right away on the side of the existing house that's on Somerset Street as an easement to the property?
The, for the access, yes.
And what do you have for frontage on that 233 right now?
The frontage on, you talking on the Prospect Street side?
Somerset Street.
On Somerset?
The dwelling that's actually...
Existing dwelling.
Existing dwelling that is currently abutting, or...
What's this, how many of these frontages is there?
How many, yeah, how many feet of frontage is, is the...
I'm sorry, which one?
On the main structure, the house that's at, the actual house that's built on Somerset Street back in the 50s, what is the street frontage?
That has the current address, 233.
Oh, I, I don't have that dimension. I mean, they're all, they all look like they're under the 175 that's required, but I don't know.
Greg, I can give you all the history on Somerset Street.
Okay.
The, the subject property has no frontage on Somerset Street. It may have back in the day if it were part of another property. However, right now, it only has frontage on Prospect and Bedford. So just to clarify the address, if relief was granted and they were able to get a building permit, I would reassign a new address to whatever frontage was, was the access. So if it was off Prospect, it would have a Prospect Street address. It would not stay 233R Somerset Street.
Okay. So where did the 233R come from? Just speak, not yet?
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
My guess is that it was part of another property at some time, but maybe the people who've lived in the neighborhood for more years than I've been here can answer that.
Listen to the other members of the board, and then after that, we'll...
Okay, so Elise, do you have any questions?
Do they enter on Bedford Street and Prospect Street? Is that the driveway?
Yeah, so the driveway does run from Prospect Street through the property?
It does.
Out onto Bedford Street.
So Elise, this is, this is not, this, I looked this up online, so this is the Google...
So the only frontage this house has is driveways, just two driveways, and most of the frontage is actually the driveway.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's the lot, but yes.
From fire department, one side doesn't have enough for four feet on both sides. It's not even enough for what, would that still be used?
I'm sorry, would, which one be used?
Maybe I'm going to...
I think basically what you're saying is that the request, the suggestion that the fire department made, is that physically possible with either of the driveways that is currently going into that property right now?
I blew so, the way I read them. And I think if any, if the board was inclined to allow any, you know, allow the variance, that obviously it could be conditioned on the firefighter and then the fire chief's recommendations that, that these are all part of the, out of, part of the permit.
The other members use just for...
We'll, we'll get, yeah, with deep parts, I'm sure, yeah.
I think I would like to, to listen to what other people have said before I have any questions.
I will, once I just, Dave, do you have any questions? Okay, that being said, I will open it up to the abutters. We do need you to come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Robert Woods, 158 J Street. I'll just give you the information that I know, Greg and rest of the board. 233... 233R, okay? The Suzas live at 233. The gentleman who owned that house, he has a go, Mr. Perry. He used to take care of the mill, he was like a landscaper. When he died, he owned the garage out back and he had a little office in there, kept all his equipment in there. But when he died, he sold the house to the Lees, the Lees were the people that lived next door. So the Lees subdivided the property somehow. And they sold their house, they sold that house, and they sold that lot out back, and then they moved down south wherever they were from. But that was never a home. There was never any electricity, no water, no sewer. Um, it was just a garage for a landscaping business. Now, where I live, across the street from these people, we all have deeds, you know, in our deeds it says that everybody has access to the rear of my property. Like my neighbors can come across my property to get to the rear of their property. And I'm sure all their deeds say something similar. And that property has been sold and up for sale for many years. And I can't tell you how many calls we get to the sewer department every time a new realtor picks up the listing. And they all want to know the same question, do you have sewer, do you have water? You know, and, and we don't. Nobody maintains the road, the town doesn't maintain the road. But it was, what was a service road back in the day when the mill was up and running. They would bring in your coal for your furnaces and such. So, uh, that's about all the history I have. It was never a home, it's an odd place to put a home. Everybody's house on Bedford Street and Summer Street, that's their backyard. The home was actually offered to the town many years ago, uh, when Tom Pies was on the Board of Selectment, and the town didn't want to buy it either. It is infested with critters and rats and chimp monks and you name it, opossums and raccoons and... There was even a deer walked in my yard two weeks ago, so it's a wildlife sanctuary. That's all I have, uh, I'm totally against this and do what you need to do.
So when he's talking about renovating that building, his client wants to renovate that house, are you saying the house currently has no plumbing, no electricity?
Has nothing. And, and somebody, one of the previous owners years ago decided to go in there and he was gonna try to make a house out of it? Without even having water, sewer, or electricity? But, you know, and Jim found out about it, he went down there, I saw pictures, the guy was putting up kitchen cabinets and I don't know what he was thinking, but, uh...
Was that the Lees?
No, it wasn't the Lees, no.
Prior to that?
Yeah, the Lees got lucky because Mr. Perry left them everything. Yeah. Wish my name was Lee. Nobody left me anything. But I'll let the rest of the neighbors speak, but...
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
It's not a home.
Any celebrity can come on up whenever they are ready.
Brian Sizer, 233. Boy, does he hit that right on the head. Never been a home. My deed right here, and I'm sure everyone over there says the same thing. Let me see if I can read this without my glasses. Uh, where are we here? Subject to any and all easement rights, conveying, uh, conveying on... For a right to entrance in egress upon smaller area situated the rear above described, the parcel to the driveway, set forth to the sketch noted above, so forth. Prospect, uh, conveying right to the driveway entrances of Prospect and Bedford. Again, how are you gonna, the fireman said it, the chief, you can't get a truck in there. There's not enough swing. We, right, you can't get a truck and a trailer in there, with a pickup truck in the trailer. So... I'd love to see it happen.
Against or for?
I'm against it, it's, it's not gonna, it can't. I would love to see you guys come down there and take a look at it. Bring a fire truck.
Can you provide a copy of...
Sure, I can, I, I'll give it, we'll copy this right now, I'll give everyone a copy of it. This is the deed to 233.
233.
You could provide a copy to...
Right, that was one property, at one time owned by the Perrys.
All right, if you could provide a copy to the board, that would be great.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else that would like to come on up, if you...
Vicky Piazza, 221 Summer Street, North Dighton.
Hey, guys, can we here, please?
Okay, good.
Okay, you all talked about the fire truck already, and there's no way it can go down that road, no way. And the other thing is, whoever surveyed my property put the survey sticks in the wrong spots because my survey originally was at the tree. Back in those days, that's what they used as, and it's five feet back. So you take out my whole backyard, it's got a curb. Cause I'm, I'm right at the, the corner as you come in, I'm the red house across the street from the fire, fire station. No sewer, water, they did illegal electricity at one point because there was a light that always shined.
Okay.
The maintenance has never been done. When I drive my car through, if I don't go out there and do it, the rose bushes or briar bushes or whatever they are clip the side of my car. The road has not been maintained, it's got ditches, it's got almost like a sinkhole in one spot because he did some work on that.
When you say, when you say the road, you mean the, the...
The private road.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you're talking about, okay, go ahead, continue, sorry.
So there's no maintenance. Mice, rodents, et cetera, have been terrible this last summer. And I don't know what caused it, but we all had mice. Um, because it hasn't been maintained at all. My house, I had one tree fall down in a microburst, which you were aware of. It totaled my car in my driveway. It, the car saved my house, it hit my deck. And I had $17,000 worth of work, plus a new car I had to get.
And that tree was on that property?
On that property. The, the, the thing is, it was a corner tree and it, I don't own that piece, okay? Those trees are like 120 years old, I think. They've been there a long time. So it causes a lot of damage to property, and since then, there's been limbs that are, you know, this big, that go 30 feet, that fall off that tree and other trees. Those are oaks and maples. The potholes, it's major, one after another, after another, after another. And I also worry about, there's that building sitting there, and any homeless person can go in it now if they try hard enough. And, you know, there was a point in time, I know I called the police because of the, they could get in years ago.
Yeah, we've been security.
Yeah, I know, yeah. And that's all I have, any questions or...
Vicky, don't forget about the winter parking, okay?
Oh, in the winter, we have to park in the back. I always park in the back 'cause of where my houses were located because other than coming down Chase Street and totaling cars and coming up on my yard sometimes. So I always park in back. Thank you.
We'll stay out, which is right.
And he's been the one that's been plowing for years and doing things for the driveway, not the owners.
I'm coming back, do you mind?
Nope.
No, because in the winter, there's no parking on the streets. You know, the police department gives you tickets and stuff. So the way that neighborhood was developed and the way the houses were built back in the day, you know, they were all owned, every house was owned by the mill. Um, we all live in mill houses. So, like in the wintertime, these people have nowhere to put their cars. So they all park out back there. And you know what I was just thinking, right, that we're on camera, let's hope some people from the town hear us. Right? The town maintains all these dirt roads down in Dighton Rock Park, right? And that is not an accepted road, right? They're owned by an association. Why ain't the town taking care of your road? That's a good question for you.
All our garages are in the back of the house. You're not on the front. My garage is, you know, I've got the driveway and then I've got my garage under the house.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that, it does, it said something, something like it does.
I didn't bring it.
But that's fine, I just, okay.
Are you sure, you said, Vicky, your, your deed does say something in there?
Huh?
Do you know if your deed does say something?
Yes, it does.
It does, yeah.
Yes, it does.
Could you also provide a copy?
I didn't bring it.
If you could bring it to the office so she can put it in the record?
I guess, yeah.
And also, um, that way we could also make sure that, um, you get records of that for your client?
Yes, thank you. All right, any other members?
Hi, I'm Kathy Costa, 255 Summer Street. And so I just want to say that it's never been called a driveway, it's always been private way. Matter of fact, there's a sign right off Prospect Street that says private way. We all use it because most of us have garages under our houses. So if you're, and you're saying like, oh, you have all this frontage, there's no frontage. It's got a frontage to a, a private way. Because on both sides, you got a loop and it's in the middle. It's people's, it's all people's backyards. There's not frontage to Summer Street, there's a whole house in front of that house. Whole, Summer Street's 233, that's a whole house. Bedford, I don't know what street is on the other side, what the, the number is, but all of that is just on a private way. So no, there's no frontage in front of the house, there's no lot for a house there, plus... So, see, it, it doesn't, she, and if they want to take their trash out, they're gonna be going through these people's houses to get to the real street. This is not a real street, it's a private way. So you can't say, oh, well, yeah, that mean, because there's an opening to get out of the private way on Prospect, and opening to get out onto Bedford, that does not make it frontage. And it's curvy. Not unlike myself.
Jim, uh, Jim, I, I know you're not the fire chief, but you probably speak on behalf of this. Based on what you know of the property, is the fire chief's recommendation physically possible?
So yes, I, I'm not the fire chief, but him and I work very closely together.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so I understand the question. So working with the chief in past, he's pretty adamant about having the 12-foot with the four-foot cleared vegetation on either side. So simple math tells us that's 20 feet. If you look at the plan that was submitted by the applicant, the only area that looks like it might be an issue unless, and by the way, this means only if you can pass completely through, otherwise if there's a dead end, you're not gonna have enough for a turnaround. Is the garage to the south appears to be only 18.2 feet off the property line. So if that were the case, uh, we'd have a difficult time getting the 20-foot width requirement per NFPA. So I wouldn't be at liberty to say whether or not the chief would grant a waiver for that, but I can tell you in the past, um, he stayed pretty true to his requirement of the 12-foot with four feet vegetative cleared at, on each side.
Yeah.
So a building can't be cleared, so I would say that doesn't meet the 20-foot requirement.
As, as a voting member, I can say that if we were to be in favor of this, I am, I personally am not going to waive any of the fire chief's recommendations.
Right.
So...
Yep.
If, if looking at it, it physically can't be done to the fire chief's recommendations to make it safe?
Correct. So in this particular case, if the fire chief was unable to, um, propose a waiver from NFPA, then that structure would have to be altered or razed in order to make, give it the 20-foot width that's required.
Right. Absolutely, yep.
Brian Sizer, 233. That young woman right there on the corner of Bedford Street? If they put a 20-foot buffer, it's gonna be on her window. It's gonna be, she's gonna open her window and it's right there.
That's what I'm...
There's not enough room, and they're not gonna be able to turn down there.
That's, I mean, that's...
This is, we've already done this. We've already done this four times.
I mean...
It's a fire safety.
If the, if the fire has it, if, if that catches on fire, um, 233 will be number one, that will be the second house on fire. I'm the closest to it. The driveway from curb to curb on the private way is probably 11 feet wide. Lucky if it's 11 feet wide. His, that front of that outbuilding to my garage door is no more than 30 feet. So if you want to burn the neighborhood down, stop by building a house.
And electricity too.
Yeah, the electricity I had, I had removed. It was an illegal unit. I called TMLB, I had removed it.
There's lots of stuff.
Any more public input?
Is there, uh, any more public input?
I'd just like to say one more thing.
Yep.
The historical commission is trying to designate our neighborhood as an historic district because all those homes were built by Milliken Industries.
Yep.
And it's a very historical area. So we're not looking for any new stuff.
Can I...
Jim, what are you concerned about, about the lack of sewer? Uh, I, I think Jim, if you can speak on the con...
Based on the letter that you wrote, I think sewer could be obtained at the expense of the applicant because sewer infrastructure is in Prospect and Bedford, I believe.
Right.
Yes, so...
It's gonna be $60,000 to $80,000 to be sewer.
But if, if the sewer department is asking for a sewer extension, which I believe is what you read into the record?
Yes.
Then that would be, uh, a sewer line that would be to the standards of the sewer department. It wouldn't just be a single line running to this, there would be, you know, a larger line, cast iron, inspected, third-party engineer.
Total infrastructure of new development.
Right, et cetera, et cetera.
And the sewer line and the water line need to be at at 10 feet apart.
Jim, for, for the record, if you feel comfortable stating, as, do you feel comfortable stating if you are for this or against it, or what your input would be?
Yeah, I, I have, I have several issues, uh, I'm not for or against. I think the abudders have brought up valid points.
Yes.
Um, I did take a picture of that deed, Brian's deed.
Yeah.
I did send it to the office manager already via email.
Yeah.
So, um, it clearly states, there, there's a couple of missing pieces 'cause it, it references other plans, but I'm sure they exist at the registry of deeds. Then I think that potentially, uh, becomes a hazard with access to this property.
Yeah, definitely.
Uh, not just from a fire perspective, but also from emergency response, even to one of the abutting properties. Um, I've been there in emergencies, as Mrs. Piazza said, um, they're very clustered. We have access to rear of, of homes on that property.
Most congested part of Dighton.
From here, right, exactly. So, um, although I think this property had its purpose early on, I think it probably served as some type of maintenance facility for the mill and for the homes that the mill workers lived in. I, I do think that, that perhaps was the... workers lived in, um, I, I do think that, that perhaps was the most useful purpose for the property. And unfortunately, transitioning to residential, although it meets the lot size requirements and it may have access to infrastructure, I think that the, the question about, you know, the hazard nature of its location, I think is valid.
Hope that helps.
If, I mean, would you think that we should really wait to see the other deeds before any kind of, just like?
I, I do. I, I think from a legal perspective, as I said in my opening statement, if there are easements that abutting property owners have legal rights to, then I think the plan needs to be modified.
We already have one.
So, and we have, we have one. The only thing I would say is that one was the property that this property used to belong to.
Right, right.
So, so I would, I would imagine that that would have been put there by the owner.
Right.
So I would be curious to see if the other properties have similar language. They may or may not. I, I believe that the, the owners say they do. We just need to see it for it to have any legal standards.
Right. So, Vicky, I know, I know you said as far as you know, yours does have that. Any other abudders here? Do you guys, from what you know, does your deeds have something, have something similar?
Maybe the originals, like when my parents bought it.
Yeah.
I don't remember now. Reddy's home is a little.
No, no, I, I know, I know.
It's all wrecked, though. We can get it.
No, yeah, I just, yeah.
I can tell you one thing, as a building official, though, um, these buildings have been, um, on my mind since I was called there many moons ago. The problem with these buildings is they were well-built and they're, they haven't risen to the level where I deem them unsafe and then.
I was gonna ask you that.
And then they need to be raised, where, as you know, 14 other buildings in this town have met that flight. But this, these buildings have not. So for me to intervene, to, to clean up the property from the, uh, um, I like the sanctuary term. I think that's a good way to put it. Um, but we have had rat calls in that area and vermin and rodents, so naturally the buildings, if they weren't gonna be repurposed or used, should be demolished. I unfortunately don't have a way to do that right now until they become further deteriorated.
Could you just go into a little more detail as to what you mean by you have the building secured?
Yes. So if it's open to the weather, if someone broke, broke in and there's no one locally who can secure the building, then I have the right to secure a building at the owner's expense. So this building was found open on a few occasions and each time it was found, it was secured appropriately.
Which, which one? There's a few, uh, there's two in that property?
Three.
Yeah, it was, it was the, the main structure that I think was used as the office area and then someone illegally tried to convert to a home.
And I believe that main structure is a bit older than the roof.
It probably does now.
So, and, Jim, what does the town define as a garage?
That's a pretty loose, uh, there's a pretty loose definition for garage. I can tell you, being on the property, I agree with, uh, the client that there are garage doors.
Okay.
On, uh.
Do they fit a car?
Typically, yes, but we, you can have a, a workshop that, with a garage door where, you know, no one, no one brings a vehicle in.
Garage does not necessarily mean.
Right.
Two, two houses, car, per se.
I can tell you the, the legal term and the term that we use as building officials and zoning officers is an accessory structure. Those, i- if there was a principal structure on the property, then those two outstructures would be accessory structures.
Accessory, right.
They, uh, in this particular case, because there's no principal structure, they're all accessory structures.
Right, but no, with no primary.
Unfortunately, the prop, the property that was the primary has now been subdivided, which is Brian's property.
Right.
As soon as he's done. As soon as he's done with me, you can.
Can I mention something? About that one garage that's ready to fall down.
Well, I haven't seen it lately, Vicky, but if, if that's the case, then I may revisit it for that, for unsafe structure designation, but I can tell you, I, I haven't been there in a few years.
I was there the other day.
Okay.
Jim, how many, I mean, uh, because we probably shouldn't make any motion until we see the other deeds. I mean, how many deeds should we expect to hear back? I mean, I don't wanna.
I believe there are three houses that directly abut this property, maybe four?
Then we have.
I would say four. The five that are on Summer, but I, I also believe that Ross, um, Bedford Street also has.
I, I, I agree. That's what I was.
I remember speaking to a gentleman years back when I bought my home, because there's often, like, this gentleman said, it's kind of a weird.
Right.
There's also a service road in the back.
Okay.
Which would service Bedford.
That's what I was, in the.
I think there's gonna be a few there also.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the reason why I'm saying it is because I'm, I'm, I'm looking to not wrap up the case, but like the discussion on this, and I want to make it clear as to who we're going to seek or who we're going to expect, who, who we want to hear back. I mean, if we, I don't wanna say, hey, anyone with, with a deed and then we have two show up, you know, I wanna hopefully get a little more exact.
Sure. Well, that's, that's at the will of the board. I mean, uh, like I said in my opening statement, legally, I don't have the right to question a, a, a plan. The plan was presented. It's, it's stamped by a PLS. However, I think tonight's hearing showed you evidence that there's at least one property that potentially has an easement. So if the board wants further clarity on whether other properties have that easement, then I think you have the right to request those documents. Whether homeowners will give them to you or not, I don't know.
So Carrie, I think we would need the direct abutter list for those on Summer and Bedford.
And Prospect.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like, right, definitely.
This, this, Mr. Chairman, this came right out of the booking page of the, uh, the registry of deeds, Mount Hope Plan, showing a butter with a driveway all the way around it.
Right, I.
This is recorded at the registry of deeds.
I agree, but that plan postdates that, that plan.
The plan when they sold the property and subdivided.
I think the plan has a date of 23 or 24.
Um.
24?
24.
24.
So they didn't recognize the driveways on that new plan?
I, that's, that's, that's a question for the PLS.
This is a smaller version of that plan that's dated 2024.
Is this came from the registry of deeds?
That is recorded at the registry of deeds.
Recorded, it was.
Right. And, and as I said earlier, I cannot refute a plan that's submitted with a, with a stamp on it, so.
Right.
But I think, I think your questioning is worthy and I think you should at least try to obtain the deeds or ask the abudders.
Because the way this is looked on this, they don't actually have an easement in or an easement out to this place.
On that original.
Correct.
On the original. That's a landlocked piece because there's all these abudders on all the sides.
Nor are there easements on the plan that was done in 24.
Right, so.
So Carrie, I mean, if we can certify mail if we have to?
We already, uh, all the abudders were notified, Zach.
No, but, but I know they were notified, but I wanna then ask them.
Finished, though. So everybody that was on that abudders list has been notified about to come here for this hearing.
Correct, but, but they might not know that now we'd like to see.
I know what you're saying. So when we do, if we do continue this and you're asking for more, gentleman showed us one.
Yep.
She shows us two.
Well, we haven't seen Vicky's yet, but she does, she has one.
Uh, um, even if some of these folks could say, I don't care. You know what I mean?
Which they very well might, but I, that's.
What I'm saying is, is what, if, what was the gentleman's name that showed us this guy here?
Uh, Brian.
Brian.
Oh, yeah.
He showed us one that is, uh, recorded. He's gonna leave it with us, okay?
He already, you know, bet to Carrie.
Right, so now.
I'm sorry.
What I'm saying is, is this is a certified plan and it was stamped by an engineer. This is a certified plan. This is a fairly new one. This has got a booking page. Does this say booking page on here? I don't see it.
Yes, it's, it's right on the right-hand side of the stamp.
Right-hand side of the stamp. I don't have my glasses. It says booking page.
It does.
Okay. And the frontage off of Prospect Street gets really narrow in that corner, even though it's wide at the road and with the 20-foot easement that the fire chief's coming in, I don't see that happening.
I mean, that's never, I mean, I, I, that's.
And nor, nor do I see it on Bedford Street.
The safety is the most important concern. But I, I.
So if this is the recorded one, what does it say? It's right here for with, what does it say? That's what they're saying is the latest and greatest?
23.64.
All right, and what, we need 20?
Yes, but I, you need to look at the.
I think there's a tighter corner in there in the back.
If you look.
I don't have my glasses.
So it's a right, almost a right angle.
Yeah, you need to, the structure is the narrowest point for access.
Yeah.
Right, 18 feet.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things already against that to even consider. You know, I mean, it was, it was denied already once.
I mean.
Is there any more public input so we can?
No, but I just wanted to say, I don't, I don't wanna make any motions to close the public input yet.
No.
But I'm just saying, keep in mind, voting members, we don't have to wait to get these deeds. If we feel like it's, have, we have enough reasons to deny all it is, then we don't need, we can, but it's.
So you have no plan on raising the structure at all? You plan on leaving the existing structure on the property? That was the plan of attack, keeping the same property definition lines off the property line. You originally said that you're not moving the very original building. You're gonna keep the same footprint of the existing building.
That's the applicant's original plan, yeah. And I just want to point out, too, that, that the, the letter from the fire department, I didn't receive until yesterday.
Sure, okay.
So I didn't even have a chance to look at this with the engineer, so.
Okay.
I'm shooting a little from the hip here when it comes to that plan.
Okay. I'm glad you said that.
But I didn't arrive, uh, to no one's fault, but I just didn't receive until yesterday.
Okay.
I think, I think from, from my perspective at least, um, a couple of things, and I'm not gonna, I don't want to put you on the spot, but it's probably gonna sound like that, which is.
That's fine.
When I was asking you about renovations, you said they wanna make a few renovations. When you have a building that has no plumbing and no electricity, that's a heck of a lot more than just a quote, "few renovations," unquote. Um, let's start with that. And then when we look at the other two buildings, whether you call them garages or outbuildings, and this is some, a, a piece of land where the, the owner wants to, in effect, make a new dwelling, but keep everything else the same as is, for me, that's just a question mark. That's, that's part of it. The other part of it is that I think, um, I don't, I don't wanna put blame on you or the owner, but it sounds like there's some due diligence that hasn't been done here that needs to be done. Because if it's done and if what we're hearing from everything from the easement, um, and the way people have easement to the, uh, the fire department's concerns, this may be untenable. So if it were me at this point, I would keep the public hearing open to give everyone, including you, a chance to respond further, to get to see the easement letters, to go back and talk to your client about the structure and to potentially, I don't know, I don't know if it's even possible to come back with a different, different plan at this point or if there's anything else that you can come up with. I don't know if I would approve it or not, but I certainly think you'd more, you'd need more time to confirm with, confirm with your client.
Great, thank you.
Does that sound?
Yeah, uh, wait, so you are, so you get the other, uh, voter member on this case?
Yes.
What actions, if any, do you think you want to take tonight?
This is really tight. Um, I think Jonathan has a point. We can look at the other easements. On thi, on this plan right here, there, there's two, there's two driveways, but I don't see the one drawn above the top of it. So if that's 21 feet to the property line, the top driveway would be on the top of it. I mean, it's just really tight.
It is.
I think in the past, there was, and I'm, I'm kinda gleaning this from looking at the plans, but, because now it's, and I've been, Jim's been there, but I was there somewhat recently. It's definitely, that top part of looking at that plan is all overgrown.
So they don't use it as.
As far as I can tell, at least where I looked it, it looked overgrown.
There's just not enough, there's eight, there's just. I think we should, uh, listen to, do what Jonathan said and listen to, to more and get more.
Yeah, so as a voter member, I'm gonna make the motion that we take this under advisement. We'll keep, we'll keep the pub, we'll keep the pub, right before you got here, John aside if you're voting members.
And that was?
Myself, John, at least, because we're the ones here at the time.
Because you weren't here yet, that's all.
So I'll make the motion that we take this under advisement and keep the public input portion, or the, the public hearing open for this case. A motion to continue to, um, March 25th with, to allow the applicant time to review the fire chief's comments as well as Carrie to reach out to, uh, those abutting on Prospect, Summer and Bedford. If they feel comfortable with and would like to provide copies of their deeds.
So I have one question. So when you, when you refer me to utilize the abudders list that takes everyone from 300 feet out, I'm assuming you don't want.
Just direct abudders.
You just want the direct abudders.
Because they would be the ones that would have a deed that would show that they had an easement. Right, because, but definitely, a butter could be a, a street away, you know, would not, right, they would, they already would not have that.
Correct.
So Prospect, Summer and Bedford, I'll, even if we need to put a list of the house numbers, but, um, you probably have that for the abutter list. Uh, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All's in favor? So we'll call vote aye, Zachary, Karen?
Aye, Jonathan Gale.
Aye, Elise Vincent.
Okay, so it's moved to, so we keep a public input open to allow us to receive more information in.
Till next meeting.
So we can't talk.
I think it's fair to you, too, because you, as I said, as you said, you hadn't even read the letter yet from the fire chief. Didn't hear about the other situations tonight. And I think that, in all fairness, you need more time to go back and discuss with your client. Appreciate that.
We don't have frontage to meet the requirements. We don't have, can you?
Makes sense. Mr. Chairman, is it 7:00 PM the next hearing?
Yes.
7:00 PM, okay.
If you want to, we can public it, we can still discuss.
Yeah, well, the existing structure that's on that property that they're trying to quote-unquote make a house out of, you don't have frontage. You don't have side setbacks that meet requirements of today. That's an, that structure was put up prior to zoning, correct?
Yes, but I believe it meets setbacks.
It does meet setbacks with frontage?
Well, yes. If the frontage is Prospect and Bedford, it would.
It technically does. Jim, are you saying? Do you mind?
No, I, no.
We get the public input. I just wanna talk about the workshop from the other day.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, so, so, this case has been continued. We're also gonna continue talking about it at, at our next meeting. Um, Carrie will reach out to abudders, but if you can just put the word amongst your neighborhood, those who feel comfortable, that went to the fire to copy some of their deed, obviously, we do not need the actual deed, whether they wanna take a picture of it and scan it into you or email it, um, by the office.
I think it costs me like a dollar.
Yeah, booking, right, a ton.
Okay.
What do you want, Zach?
Thank you all.
So the next, uh, going backwards in our agenda, but the next thing would be to review, discuss and act, uh, Stonegate Landing. All right, well, I'll just give you a minute, let's see what I can see. Oh, yeah. We definitely, we definitely, absolutely.
No, you're on, why?
Well, this, uh, I, I, not to talk.
Excuse, wait, excuse me, Zach?
Yeah.
We're still on.
We still have, we still have a meeting, so it's, eh, 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 yeah, Zach, it's okay.
We've already excused everybody for the night.
No, but she can actually ask the question.
Next time, we're gonna have the easement, so we're asking for the easement.
That, that would be a question for when, if we get there, but, um.
We're gonna look exactly at that.
If we get there, that would be, that would be, that would be, that would be addressed. So Carrie, we don't need permission to go onto that property, do we? I wanna drive on that roadway right now. It's private.
It's private road. They have easement. If they give us.
Jim, so, so obviously we can do a drive-by. Can we drive onto that property? Because I don't have an easement, but they do. My definite one. Excuse me, guys. Just to know, we're still continuing our meeting, so if you don't mind just filing out? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, the next item agenda we had was to review, discuss, and act, Stonegate Landing. Uh, LLC. They're open, they're open. They got one. And we're also gonna have to, uh, pass on that item agenda. We have not heard back from Federoff. Uh, Carrie reached out to him, asking, reminding him that the 53G account needs to be replenished, and we're seeking a check for that, and we have not heard back yet, so that's why we are moving on to that. Uh, Carrie, we have no correspondence, correct? Public input, um, as you guys know, I was unable to meet, uh, make that workshop, but I heard very good things about it. John spoke very highly of Jim, Jim, do you mind just coming up and just?
Yeah, so I did find out yesterday, um, at that meeting, I told everyone that there was a model bylaw that was going to be proposed by the state that cities and towns could adopt. I did, uh, get confirmation that bylaw is going to be available March 11th. So I would ask everyone, um, although you're correct, the workshop did go well, um, I would refrain from revamping any bylaws until we read the model bylaw. Um, from what I'm told, that should, um, clarify and, uh, not conflict with the law. And the state is encouraging all cities and towns to adopt it and/or adopt it with conditions. So if we, if we want to add things to it, as long as they don't conflict with the law, then we're able to do that.
What are your biggest, I don't want to choose the word negatives, but?
Concerns.
Concerns that we are going to be up against, that we weren't up against before?
My concerns, and, and I, I alluded to this, I'm not sure if it was articulated to you. My takeaway from the second training I had, uh, which was put on by the state, is that the state has made a, um, will be making an effort to add 225,000 housing units in the state in the next 10 years. So that's over 2,000 housing units per year. My takeaway is that if the law in its current form does not produce the amount of numbers that they want to see, and by the way, they're asking building officials to report back to the state on an annual basis what our numbers are for ADUs, then my guess is that they are going to further loosen the law to make sure that they can meet the housing demands of the state over the next 10 years. So that's my biggest concern. So, and, and to me, in order to do that, I don't think every single, single-family home will take advantage of the law as it's written. Um, but multiple ADUs may become a problem on singular lots, so.
Well, on one, on one.
Right, and I believe there's a special permit provision that we're allowed to do, so I would encourage the town to make sure that if the model bylaw is absent on the, on the topic, that we include a special permit requirement for any more than one ADU on a property.
What do you think is going to be, Dayton specifically, our biggest obstacle? That?
I think it can be, especially where we have large parcels of land. Um, I know one property in particular has complained vigorously on the taxes that they pay, and they're looking for ways to supplement the, the, uh, the, or offset the costs. So I think somebody with large tracts of land may try to take advantage of it. This is also happening concurrently with a new by, a new law rap, sorry, strike that, a new code rollout where there's an appendix in the code, le- loosening up the law, uh, the, the, uh, code requirements for tiny homes. That's any home that is 400 square feet or less. So I think if you add the two together, even though the ADU model bylaw allows, uh, law, rather, allows 900 square feet, I think people may try to take advantage of the smaller footprint allowed by the new code.
Is that enough?
Exactly. So, um, because it, it does loosen up some of the egress requirements and things of that nature, so it will make it more palatable. And of course, the smaller the size, the more cost-effective it, it may become. So I have that concern. The one benefit that we have as Dayton, which other communities similar to us has, is that we are primarily septic. And we talked in the workshop, that septic is going to have a big impact on controlling the amount of ADUs because you still need to meet all the parameters of Title V. Title V is not in any way, shape, or form, uh, negated by the law. So Title V stays intact. Again, my concern is if we don't meet the ADU thresholds, I think the state may look into other ways. How, is it communities that are served by private sewage that are not meeting?
They can see what towns aren't doing it, and why aren't they doing it, loosen up that.
So then they might go to DEP and start changing some of the DEP regulations, so that may be forthcoming. Speculation on my part, but I see the writing on the wall.
But having said that, this could potentially, if they, if they had to re- relax the regulations somewhat, that could potentially enable towns like ours to, for our infrastructure, for piping and so forth, who knows, it could be five years, eight years, 10 years down the road, there could be more dollars available for that infrastructure.
It's possible.
To meet what the state wants.
It's possible. That's the only way we're going to have sewer expansion in this town, is if there are funds to fully, fully pay for it. There's no way the town people can pay for that.
Do you see this having any dovetail with any 40Bs?
I.
New 40Bs?
Yeah.
I should say.
I, I see that the way the law is written, and the way I interpret it, which seems to be interpreted by others, I think that it could potentially impact the 40Bs in such a way that everyone has a right to one ADU.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So could we potentially get the holes in front of us with a new 40B with one already on there?
It's possible. The, the, uh, the other, the other thing that I think I should bring to your attention, again, in case it wasn't articulated to you, is, um, the question of HOAs came up. And HOAs are still enforceable. So if an HOA has language in their local, um, regulations that prohibit ADUs, that is enforceable, however, not by me, I can't fight that. The HOA Association, so, so what I said, um, both at the training and at the workshop, was if you come to me for an ADU permit and you are part of an HOA, I want a letter from the trustees stating that they are allowing this ADU to be built, and it's, it's in full conformance with the HOA. I don't have to seek conformance with HOA, but because you live in an HOA subdivision, you need to provide me by vote on letterhead that your trustees.
You don't get that.
And if I don't get that, you're not getting a permit.
So what I was, what I was asking Jim, and he, as he said, he, you know, this may be a separate issue, um, when we were talking about this last Thursday with the HOAs, for example, the house next to me is a ranch. They theoretically, they theoretically, it's a 40B development, they theoretically could build that dwelling unit, for example. But because we're an HOA, they may not. However, what I think we may want to consider doing is looking into whether or not we can add that to our, our bylaw. Whether or not, you know, the HOA component, because I can see the argument from so, an attorney somewhere saying, you know, well, you're saying it's up to the HOA, but there's nothing in your town bylaws that prohibits it.
Can?
So we may have to ask for a letter ruling specifically.
But if an HOA is written, and we record it, and we do everything, and that's pretty much what it is, it'd have to be done at the beginning, am I correct? You can't just change it.
Right, I, I, I don't.
You can change it, if, if, you can later, if, if, if the majority of the HOA votes.
That's the thing, I mean, that, that has nothing to do with us, though.
So you're, you're, you're skirting the line between private and public. The HOA is strictly a private regulation that is governed by the people who own property within that subdivision. So there are things that HOAs can't do. You know, you can't say that the road width is 15 feet or 20 feet. The town decides all of that, okay? However, you are allowed to prohibit colors in your subdivision. You are allowed to prohibit house designs in your subdivision. You are even allowed to limit the amount of accessory structures on your property, which go completely outside of what the bylaw allows. So, so that's, the reason I am not going to get involved in that is the HOA chooses their own destiny. But by the same token, if you live in an HOA and you come to me for an accessory structure, or in this case, an ADU, I want something from the HOA that says you're allowed to do that.
Can the zoning board put any conditions? So let's say we have a, you know, variance, they want to put two houses on one lot. Can we put a condition saying no ADUs?
The, the response.
Obviously, the only time that we can have a say in it is if we have a new, can we, can we condition that?
So what I was told directly by the attorney at the first training, who was from, um, Bobrowski's office, is that any residential use allowed by special permit or variance is a protected use. In other words, you allowed it, you allowed them to grant, you granted them waivers for whatever it was, was for, frontage, area, whatever.
Yep.
Once that building gets an occupancy permit, they still have rights to one ADU.
So then we can't, we can't.
You can't, you can't restrict that, right. My, my guess is that if you take the model bylaw and you try to condition it too much, the AG's office will kick it back. It won't be approved. Even though town meeting approves it, when it goes to the AG for ratification, as you know, it takes, what, October sometimes before we get these back? My guess is if it's over-conditioned, it's going to get denied. And you won't be, you'll have, you'll be back to the drawing board. And we'll be without a law, a, a bylaw. So, I'm not saying that you shouldn't, you know, do what's best for your community and your town. Just understand that this is a statewide, um, effort.
It's bringing, so they're gonna be.
Yeah. And I think, I think the, I think the costs and Title V are going to severely limit the amount of ADUs that you see coming up. And for instance, I haven't issued one yet, March 1st next week. It's been in, it's been in effect for a whole month. And I think part of that is because I publicly stated what I expect from you. No sheds, no Conex boxes, no, this is going to be a structure. So now you, 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 you got to make a commitment, this is a structure, at $100, $150 a square foot, whatever it is, you know? And the second thing is the septic. You, you, you must do a Title V, our local regulation says you must do a Title V inspection. If you don't pass Title V inspection, and that system does not meet the additional flows required for the ADU, you have to put a new septic in. We know what those cost. So I think those two things are going to limit the ADUs that we see.
Have your own electric meter, right?
That, you don't have to have that either, no. Now, now, there are minimum housing standards that come in, okay, which is through, uh, the health department, where if you rent, because the ADU cannot limit who, who lives in this ADU either. So if you rent, now renters have a, a right to separate utilities. You, you, you know, net metering by a homeowner, that doesn't fly anymore, housing court doesn't like that. Homeowner says, I'm using $300 worth of electricity, okay, how did you derive it that? So my guess is that most people are going to want to separately meter it if they rent them out, so that the tenant pays their own electricity.
Right.
That's the cleanest way to do it.
So this, it comes out March 11th, when will, I mean, the town will get that draft, March 11th?
He sent me a link, so on March 11th, I'll download it, and Carrie will download it, and then she can disperse it to everyone.
Obviously, we have to reach out to planning, which we will. I mean, do you suggest another workshop?
I do, I think post-March 11th, we have another workshop, yeah.
And then we have to, and then at that point, that's a, that's a draft, technically, right?
That's a draft.
When will that go into effect?
We need to bring it to town meeting, so we have to have public, we have to have public hearing, and, yeah. So we, I think we decided at the workshop that the end of March was the, the date when we had to have something drafted, yeah.
Okay. So if that comes out March 11th, when it comes out March 11th, I guess, can we already get email out to planning, and then obviously clear it with Jim too? I should date ASAP, I mean, we want to get people to review it, obviously, but as soon as we can after.
Yeah, then I think in that workshop, it would be beneficial for everyone to bring their ideas for what they'd like to add to it, if anything. And then we, we should leave that meeting, have a clear direction of, of, are we taking it verbatim? And if we are, are we adding anything? And at least we'll have some direction to go to a public hearing with.
With your expertise and knowledge, how much of it do you think the town of Dayton will want to make edits to? Like, do you think it's going to come in, it could be pretty clean cut, or do you think we're gonna have to?
If, if the model law is anything like what I heard at the first two trainings, I think the only thing we might do is the multiple ADUs on a lot by special permit. The, uh, the, the only other thing that you might want to consider is we cannot require a site plan review unless we already require a site plan review. So you would have to, you, you would have to change your bylaw to require the site plan review. I don't know how the AG would feel about a post-change to the bylaw because of an ADU.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. However, I, I am told that you can require a site plan review for the second, third, fourth, or multiple ADUs, so.
I don't want to get to that point.
I know.
But, no, I know.
I don't know, I think, I think the cost for an ADU versus, uh, and the Title V, I think it's going to keep them at bay.
North Dayton will pick up a few.
Yeah, we will, yeah. Nobody can borrow money at a reasonable rate right now either. So if the rates loosen up, maybe you'll see a, a little more interest, but right now, it's, it's pretty difficult. So.
So if we did a septic system, and, uh, it's up, what is it, one bedroom more than what you actually have if you put one in there, it's like a three?
There's no limits on bedroom counts either, you can have more than one bedroom.
Five rooms, right, divided by three?
So, no, um, I, I make sure I understand you. So Title V says 110 gallons per day per bedroom.
So it's still by bedrooms?
Still by bedrooms, nothing, no. There is a formula for repairs on existing homes. If you have a home, like for instance, homes down on Pleasant Street, the old Victorians, you may have three bedrooms, but you got 10 Palas, you know? So, so they, they, there is a formula in Title V that says you take the total number of rooms minus the kitchen, nope, divided by two. Minus the kitchen and the bathrooms and divide by two.
My question was, is so, okay, let's say the accessory structure is going to come in, and he just, he had one above, he has to bring it again above, that can never be equal. So like usually, if it's a three-bedroom, I always say I like to see a four-bed, a four-bedroom septic system, a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom septic system.
All right, I want to make sure I understand your, your, your question. So are you saying if someone puts in a septic system?
Accessory structure on the property.
Yeah.
Needing you, and it just brought it up to what he has, and now he doesn't have to increase it for that extra bedroom, does he?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, if, if the, if the, if the septic has reserve in it that can accommodate the one more bedroom, then they just need to do a Title V inspection.
Yeah, but he doesn't have to increase the size of it.
No. There, the, I don't want to speak for the health department, that's their forte, but I happen to know Title V. There is, there is a requirement when you have multiple dwelling units on one septic system to have a two-compartment tank. So they, the health department may require a new tank to be put in, even if the septic system's okay. Or you can add a second tank to serve the ADU, and, and that serves as the two compartments. So, but that's up to the board of health. Yeah, so no bedroom restriction, Zach. So 900 square feet, if you, if you want to have a, you can fit two bedrooms easily in a 900 square foot prop, uh, dwelling unit.
Then he has to have one parking spot.
Unless they're within a half a mile of bus, uh, public transit.
Don't need none.
No spots. And it's not a bus stop. It's within a half a mile of public transit, no parking spots. We cannot require them to add any parking spots.
I think they did that for Boston.
Mm-hmm, and the theory behind that is that if enough ADUs go into an area and there isn't a bus stop, then they will put, they'll add a bus stop.
Not likely.
That works for some communities.
Right.
But not downtown.
So if, if, you know, a half a mile either direction of 138, because there are buses that run on 138.
Correct.
Technically, I, we can't require parking, so. And that is in con, that contradicts with NFPA, but the fire chief and I have conversed, and from his sources, he can't supersede that either, because it's law. So, I don't know how many people are not going to want an off-street parking spot with an ADU in Dayton that's getting $1,800 a month, so.
So because, I mean, because we still have that, we know we, mostly continuing, Carrie, we can't really continue. Carrie, we can't really continue to talk about the case tonight? It's only in this meeting.
Thank you.
All set?
All right.
Appreciate it, bud.
Right.
Good night.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the meeting minutes of January 28th, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second to approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye Greg Logan.
Aye Zachary Karen.
Aye Jonathan Gale.
Aye Elise Vincent.
Aye Dave and Paul.
Was Dave here last meeting?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye Zachary Karen.
Aye Greg Logan.
Aye Jonathan Gale.
Aye Elise Vincent.
All right, we are all set.
Thank you.